Welcome back to the Garden State Law Podcast. I'm your host, Tim Lau. Joining me today is real estate and land use attorney, Justin Colta. Justin, thank you for joining us. This is your second or third time joining us?
I did the inaugural.
You did the inaugural.
I was number one.
So we're looping back around.
I'm number 35 or whatever we're up to.
Okay, so Justin and I will be talking today a little bit about appearing before a planning board when you go ahead and get a variance. But before we do that, maybe you could tell us a little bit about your practice.
Sure, so planning or zoning board, and we can get into what the differences between those two are.
That's the first question I have for you.
First and biggest. So yeah, I am a, I'm a real estate attorney. I primarily do commercial real estate, but my practice consists of three different buckets, really. Purchases and sales, we don't typically do residential, we're not set up for it, so it's mostly commercial there. Do a lot of commercial leasing, and then land use and development, like, like you mentioned. For that, we do both commercial and residential. They're not too dissimilar, but you know, those are my three main areas. I've also been doing some litigating. I don't like to think of myself as a litigator, but you know, it's a, it's, it's cabined to litigation revolving around land use development approvals. Sort of what happens when things go wrong? So that's also a facet of my practice that I can assist clients with.
Okay, so we already talked about it a little bit, and this was my first question, because I actually went through this process with you. You got me a variance, so right off the bat, one for one for a pool. So my town has a planning board, but I know other towns have zoning boards, and I know other towns, I believe, have both planning and zoning boards. What is the difference? And for someone who's listening or watching, does it really matter at the end of the day? You know, you have to go in front of a board who's going to grant you approval or not approval for a variance for your property. But maybe just for background purposes, you can tell us what the differences are.
So I'll take it a little out of order. It might matter. And the reason I say it might matter is because planning board, where some towns have combined boards, those are towns that have a smaller population. So the law lets them, you know, you're not, you're never going to find 20 willing and able people that are going to give up their, their Thursday nights from, you know, seven to 11 at night. So that the law lets them combine into a single board where they wear a planning board hat, or they wear a zoning board hat when they need to sit either. So the difference mainly between those two is whether you need site plan approval or not. Site plan approval is usually not applicable to single or two-family developments. So you need a fence, you need a shed, you need a deck, even an addition, your patio, your pool. You'd be in front of the zoning board because you wouldn't need site plan approval. Zoning boards also have exclusive jurisdiction over what's called the devariance. The devariance, without getting too complicated, it's the classic example I always get is, you know, you live in a residential area, somebody wants to put a McDonald's up next to you, that's not going to fly. You need a devariance. You need special permission to put up something that's not permitted in that zone. So in planning boards, you typically see planning boards with subdivisions, right? That's, that's their main focus. And their other focus is, is site plan approval. So it's subdivision of land, which could be residential, but you'll see a lot of more commercial oriented things. If you're a small business owner, you also wind up in front of the planning board sometimes with, with what they, some towns call it change in tenancies, some call it change in permitted use. It's sort of a way of the town knowing what's going in for, you know, say like a strip mall, or you know, a single purpose building that's relatively small, your corner deli or something like that. But homeowner, fence, shed, deck, addition, you're probably going to be in front of the zoning board. They're a lot busier, too. So they, they're, so when you get a calendar date, we'll get into the whole process and everything like that. You're not always guaranteed to go on that date because everybody, like right now, right, starting to warm up, people are thinking about getting the pool, they need a fence around the pool, they're thinking about, ah, you know, maybe we should do the addition, I want to redo the driveway, all of a sudden you've got an impervious coverage variance that you need or something like that. Things heat up, gets much more backlog than the zoning board, whereas, you know, and take like my town, small residential town, doesn't have, it's not overflowed with commercial space. Planning board might not even meet sometimes because they just don't have enough applications if there's not a subdivision or something like that. So that, that's the main difference. It's, it's, do you need to use variance? You're in front of the zoning board. If you don't need site plan approval, you're in front of the zoning board, or you're not subdividing. If you are doing anything that requires site plan or subdivision that doesn't involve a devariance, you're not trying to put the big scary thing up where it doesn't belong, you're in front of the, the planning board. And there's a difference. Zoning boards, they're, they're not always the same members. So sometimes they have totally different vibes. You can get a zoning board that is very relaxed and a planning board that wants something out of you no matter what, could be the other way around, or sometimes, you know, I'll tell you war stories, it's, they're both off. But, but that's, that's, well, I don't want to get ahead of you, but you know, knowing what they want to hear, having experience being in front of not just them, but boards generally, you know, that's, that's where the attorney and being able to put together a good professional team comes in.
Okay, so, and to put like a little frame around this, we're speaking specifically with respect to New Jersey, but every town is a little bit unique depending on what things are. But generally speaking, is it safe to say that whether you're watching this from Indiana, or you're watching this from New Jersey, the laws are somewhat transferable?
Yeah, yeah, well, somewhat transferable. The concerns are always going to be the concerns with, you know, when it rains and you're putting up a new driveway, or you're improving the lot, there's a whole bunch of concrete, McAdam or something like that, where's the water going to go? They don't want to go into your neighbors, they want to treat it on site. But yes, generally development, wherever you are, it's going to engender the same sort of concerns that are people are going to be wondering about. The way it's set up, though, who gets to control what? New Jersey is like infamous for this, right? It's super hard to get anything done because we have some of the most stringent environmental laws in the country. And we are the home real estate. We have like, like 505, 501, sometimes they go up, sometimes, you know, somebody splits off. We have over half a thousand municipalities, and the way that our municipal land use law is set up, there's some sort of, I'll call it scaffolding regulations that the towns are allowed to sort of fill in. So you have 501 different development schemes that you need to comply with.
They're also the most densely populated.
Yeah, so we're everywhere, everybody's got their own rule.
Yeah.
And everybody wants something different.
Sure.
So, but you know, it's, we're also very diverse. Westfield looks a lot different than, than Newark. And you know, that, that home rule, as frustrating as it can be, does lend itself to, you know, individual characteristics of each, each different town. You know, we have a lot of pride for where we're from in New Jersey.
Sure.
I'm not saying it's because of zoning land use, but it's a part.
It's a part of it. All right, so let's start from the beginning. Let's, let's talk about this under the pretext that this is residential. You're a homeowner, you're looking to extend your house into the back of your property, you apply for a permit, per construction permit, you get denied, saying that you are in some sort of violation of some sort of code, and you're going to need a variance. Start from the beginning of the process, what happens there? They deny you, and you have to, I believe, if I recall correctly, you have to get denied first when you file for a permit, so they know what's happening, and then you begin an application. And also, with the application, at what point do you engage with an attorney? Because I hired you as an attorney, I'm glad I did, because I saw many people at the same meeting get denied and come back a month later with an attorney. So there does seem to be some help there. So start us from the beginning, when do you engage with someone that can help you, and what's the beginning of the process look like?
So in the beginning, you're probably going to know whether or not you need that variance right away, because when you get an engineer and architect to draw, you know, let's just use an example of an addition, and we use the example of a town in New Jersey like Nutley, where you have, you know, relatively small postage stamp lots, where you don't have, you know, like an acre of land, like you wouldn't, like a town like Harding, where you can just, you can put up something much larger. And oftentimes, you have bought a lot that's been developed, you know, the house was built like 1920 or even earlier. And it was fine at the time, but now as things get more restrictive, you could even have an existing nonconformity that you had absolutely nothing to do with, but you're stuck with if you.
You might not even be aware of.
That, that you're stuck with now, and you know, it's your problem. But when you're designing the home, you know, your architect, your engineer, both, they're going to let you know, like, okay, this is what you want to do here, the applicable zoning regulations. Based on what you want, you're over by X, Y, Z percent on, you know, you pick. Impervious building coverage, those are the two main that you're going to run into.
And impervious being just one of my variances, basically, you have to help allow a certain amount of land to be drainable for water. So no concrete, you know, driveways, no decks in certain instances. My pool is impervious.
And gravel. So if you think you're going to get away with it with gravel, because you watched the water actually go through the gravel, towns actually treat, some towns, and I, it's going further in this direction, where some towns are treating gravel as impervious, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, I'm sure there's some engineer right now saying, no, it's not the same thing. But the point being, you can't just solve it with like, you know, gravel patio or gravel area, that'll be treated as impervious. And in fact, your town considered your pool, which is more or less a giant catch basin in your backyard, that's impervious coverage. They treat that as impervious.
Still don't understand, but fair enough.
Yeah, yeah. So, so you're going to know, like, before you're allowed to, you know, do the kickoff, whether or not you're going to need relief. You probably want to get an attorney involved then, before, you know, you sign off, you finalize those plans, you know, those plans aren't cheap. So if you're going to be pot committed with those plans, and that's what you want to run with, you should talk to somebody who's in front of that board regularly. Sometimes it's the architects, you know, if it's the architect and they've done, or a pool company, they've done 5,000 pools in that town over, over the past 10 years or whatever, they're going to know sort of what the board's going to want to hear and everything like that, and what you can get away with. And sometimes the strategy is, ask for a little bit more. If they don't go for it, you can always reduce it and, you know, give them something they want later on. But after that, right, you design it, you kind of know the relief that you're going to need. Like you said, if you don't need site plan approval, which you wouldn't for something like this, yes, you submit for your permits, zoning officer takes a look at it, construction department takes a look at it, they compare it against the regulations, and they say, no, you're over by X, Y, and Z. You can either appeal this, appeal meaning like, he calculated it wrong, there's an error, you're not really over by 15%, you're actually over by, or you're not over, you know, that's the appeal. Most people don't appeal it unless there's something glaring error. And even then, if the error was glaring and like pretty convincing, you probably just get the zoning officer to change it rather than having to appeal it full blown before the zoning board. You get instructions on how to apply for a variance. And soup to nuts, that process, in a nutshell, it's obviously way more complicated than this, but you know, you fill out a zoning application form, depending on how many variances you need, you could need multiple. You're going to pay a fee based on each variance. For residential, it's typically not that much money. Couple, 150, 200 bucks per variance. Sometimes some towns just do the, you need one variance, it's a flat fee. You also have what's known as escrow fees, and this can be sort of the shocker. In New Jersey, the way our law is set up, you put a pot of money into the town coffers, and out of that pot, they pay for all their professional reviews. They're the attorney, who's not, you know, the attorney's bill like a reduced rates.
The town attorney.
The town attorney. So you're not looking at, you know, somebody billing you like a thousand dollars an hour or something like that.
And every planning board, zoning board will have an attorney sitting on that board?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely. They're all going to have a planner, they're all going to have an engineer. You don't really see somebody like an architect. But zoning officer, the engineer, the planner, and the attorney, those are your professionals that, well, the zoning officer won't hit the escrow, but the engineer, the planner, and the attorney, who are all typically outside folks. Sometimes the engineer is directly employed by the municipality. But they are going to review your application. Sometimes you get a comment letter on it. For small residential projects, you might not get a letter saying, you know, we have the following comments that we'd like to see addressed. You know, for example, you know, can, can you grade it so the water runs this way instead of this way? You know, we'd like to see a drain, you know, I think you had to put in what, a perimeter drain around the pool, plus a drywall in your backyard. Yeah, we're, we, New Jersey loves.
Drywells.
Stormwater management. It's the favorite thing that they, you know, they love watching the water fall out of the sky and figure out where it's going to go.
Everyone I know that has a pool also has a giant tank in their backyard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not, even though the pool is the giant tank, you've got to put two giant tanks in it. So you do that, assuming you get complete. So the way the law works, you fill those applications out, you give them the escrow fee, you give them the application fee. There might be checklists, you know, you have to submit certain things, and they want to see certain, the plans that you submit have to have certain information on it. So there's two different kinds of checklists. Submission checklists, you know, we want to see the fee, we want to see the escrow, we want to see X number of plans, and then there's design checklists, you know, we want to see the following information depicted on the plan. Sometimes it doesn't make sense. You're putting a pool in, you don't have to submit a traffic circulation study, right? So you ask for a waiver for something like that. Or the, the big tricky thing is always whether or not you can get a waiver for environmental impact statements, or environmental information sheets that don't rise to the level of full-blown, you know, environmental study or something like that. Again, we're always going back to stormwater management, depending on, you know, what your lot looks like. If you don't have a lot of backyard, you know, you have a lot of sidewalk driveway, you had, you have a lot of driveway. I think that's really what triggered your, your house was further setback from the lot than others that you typically see. So you had a further back driveway, that extra driveway gave you an impervious coverage variance. Absolutely as your pool.
Yeah.
So you, you get all that in, they have 45 days to determine whether or not you've given them everything that they asked for, and if you've asked for any waivers, you know, whether they are appropriate, you typically address, some towns address them at the hearing, some towns will do it upfront. Assuming everything's hunky dory, you will get a calendar date, and that's when you need to show up and appear. But like I said before, if you're in front of a busy zoning board in the summer, you're not guaranteed to go on that date.
Are we back? So 2025 now, I did this all.
Yeah.
Virtually, are we in person again, or some towns doing it both?
So I have, I have an application coming up in North Jersey. They are in town, they are in person. Larger, some larger cities, like, they are still virtual. My town, still virtual. It's pluses and minuses to it, right? So if you have a non-controversial application, you know, you're, you're putting up an addition, and you need a variance, but it's, it's not really offensive. It doesn't impact your neighbor on this side, or you know, you're not towering over them. Not much is changing in the neighborhood by virtue of you putting an addition up. Nobody's probably going to show up and complain. I don't think this is what the drafters of the municipal land use law meant, but what it's become is, for any project that could or does have an impact, or people just don't want to see it, it has become like, these, these applications have become like townwide referendums, and everybody comes out and airs their grievances. Sometimes it's legit, sometimes it's just, if you just don't want to see it.
Sure. Is this a good time to talk about the notice? Because I know there are several notifications that have to happen before you go.
You should talk about notice, because this, this is what, this is what gets people, you know, showing up.
Because they got to find out somehow.
Yeah, yeah. So, but just to, just to cap the thought on the virtual or in-person, so the virtual, it's a lot more streamlined. I don't mind it, because it's, it's very controlled. And you don't have, you know, the, the people in the back that don't like what you're doing, sort of, you know, making the comments, muttering themselves. And, you know, there's always the power of the mute button. People get up and say like the wildest things at these things, like inappropriate things. Can't, you can't just, you know, you can't unclip, you know, you can't hit, there's no in-real-life mute button.
I wish there was, but there is not.
Lord do we, right? You know, not just for zoning board meetings. But, you know, with the virtual, everything's, you know, you get them everything in advance, it's all popped up on the screen, it's munchy, you know, everybody can see it. When you're, you know, we, everybody thinks that we're in like a large courtroom or something like that. No, sometimes, I've, I've been to municipal land use law meetings in like trailers, where everybody sits up front, they're all looking at the plans, you can't see the plans if you're in the stands, you're standing at the back of an easel. So with the virtual thing, you know, it's, everybody sees what's on it, you can zoom in on certain things. I, being, you know, part of the younger generation, sort of prefer the virtual thing, because also, you know, I don't have to travel two hours out of my way, and you know, it saves money for the client. I think that there is a certain X factor that's lost when you do it virtually, though, especially for an application that is a little trickier. You know, how reasonable you are, how well, and you know, how articulate you can sort of respond to some of these points. It does come across differently when you're in person.
Sure.
That certainly can be a help. But yes, so going back, you get your completeness determination, you get your, your calendar date, assuming you're going on that date. Two things got to happen in order for the board to have jurisdiction. You need to send notice to 200, all your neighbors within 200 feet of your property, and you have to run newspaper, notice in the newspaper. I don't know who's combing the newspaper for these notices anymore. If, if I had one thing I could change, you know, if you gave me the magic land use wand, one thing I would change is, is the way we do noticing in New Jersey. It's, the law is very murky on it. And I think, you know, we go to these conferences, the best, the best way I've heard it described is, you know, there's two land use attorneys. There's the attorneys that have made an error in the notice, and there's the attorneys that haven't made the error yet. So it's, it's just, it's, it's very nerve wracking. And if there's anything that's found wrong, which you won't find out about until after the fact, it's, it's, you know, you were never allowed to get past go. So.
Give me an example of what would be wrong in a, in a notice.
So what, what people typically get in hot water about, you know, type, there's some cases about, you know, typographical errors, about property addresses and things like that. It's, were you sufficient in describing the scope of the project and the intensity of it? So you know, there's some cases about, somebody was putting up, you know, like a banquet hall. Did you sufficiently describe what was going on in the banquet hall?
Yeah.
Is it a restaurant?
Yeah.
It's a restaurant. Does it have enough parking? What are the hours of operation?
Yeah.
Things like that. And you also can't write five-page-long notices. A, they're super expensive, and B, I don't even know if the newspaper would take it anyway. So notice is super important. That's something, so each town, this is where I'm going to pitch why you need an attorney. Each town has like a form of notice that you just like fill in the blank for. Those things, I promise you, some of them are like, you're never, they just can't be right. Like, they're, they're going to be wrong off the bat.
Yeah.
Because of how legally technical the notice process is, it's really something that you should run by or have an attorney draft. And I've never used the form of notice. And I know, I don't know any attorney that uses it, to be honest with you. I mean, you should really craft it from, from your own form, that, you know, you know, has withstood challenge, that you know, you know, you update as notice, cases about whether notice was right or wrong come up, or, you know, you anticipate certain comments that were made in cases, so you try and get in front of it. You should have an attorney do the notice, or at least review it, and don't use, be very wary of using their own form.
How do you advise your clients in terms of individual? So it's 200 feet, right? So 200 feet can stretch, and at least for me, it was behind my property across the road to neighborhoods that weren't even, they don't even know my street name, they have no idea who we are, and they really don't care. I would think that for the most part, residential projects are really going to impact the properties that are, that are touching. So do you recommend, thankfully, my neighbors, we have all good relationships with, but do you recommend to your clients that you knock on the door, you say, hey, here's the plans, here's what I'm doing, like, you have that conversation, so you're not being blindsided at a meeting? And what is your recommendation to, to clients who may not have the best of relationships? I'm not going to say a bad relationship, but has a neighbor that might be a little wary of what they're doing, to kind of get in front of whatever challenges might come at a planning board meeting?
This is a good way to wrap up what you need to do with the notice. So it needs to be 10 days before you send the mailing out, you get the 200-foot list from the municipality. You don't have to like go and do like a survey or something.
Which you have to pay for.
10 bucks. But yes, you have, you have to pay for it. There's almost nothing in this process that you don't have to pay for. So, and you need to also, like I said, be in the newspaper. You got to be careful about the newspaper, it's got to run 10 days before. But sometimes papers want that notice needs to be submitted three days before that 10-day deadline. If you're not in that paper in time, you're not going on your calendar date. You got to kick it off. We move at the speed of government. Some towns, you know, their boards meet once a month. Sometimes they can't cut a quorum in the summer, they don't have enough people to like actually vote on it. So if you miss it, you could be waiting 30, 60 days.
And the first, if I recall correctly, because we fell in this category.
Yeah.
The first month's meeting was some type of reorganization?
Yeah.
Where they didn't actually hear any applicants?
So that's, you have to refresh about that one, because typically, it's not that much of an issue. So they'll do two meetings on, you know, January 3rd, or, you know, whatever the first January meeting is, where they reelect everybody, they set their schedule. That takes like 15 minutes. So they'll have a reorg meeting, and then immediately after that, they'll have their regular meeting.
I thought maybe it was limited for us. I don't recall exactly, but.
But it, but it could be, because generally speaking, that's the way the towns work.
Yeah.
Like I said, every town just like does their own thing. So maybe they just had one dedicated reorg meeting, and that was it. They called it a night, everybody went home, and then they, you know, we'll, we'll meet later on in the month. But yes, but it's, the, the point, the point is important to make that, based on what else is going on at that meeting, you might not be going that night.
Yeah.
Either their reorg, for whatever reason blew up, or they're only doing one reorg, or you've just got 10 people in front of you. And you don't, it's not like, they don't, they cut things off at like 10:30, 11 o'clock. So if you don't finish your application, you're coming back the next month, which means you're in front of anybody, you know, that, that applied after you. So it, it could be a while before you, you finally get hurt. Not saying it takes a year, it's, I've never heard of that. You can also request adjournments if you're going on vacation, if you're not ready, or, you know, neighbor shows up and says, hey, I got some problems with this, would you be willing to make some changes, you know, things like that. So you notice, you get your calendar date. Also, about the mailings, you mail them out 10 days before. That's when they're, you know, considered as having been sent. Neighbors, and it's often certified, you know, you get your little green card if you're not home. Neighbors sometimes don't pick them up till like, you know, the day before, the day of, you know, they don't know what's in the, just because it was 10 days before, it doesn't mean they're getting it 10 days before.
Sure.
They often don't get it much, until much sooner before, you know, the calendar date. Yeah, listen, it, boards love hearing, my neighbors are fine with this. It's even better, well, you can't really show up and say, no, I talked to my neighbors, they're all good, just trust me, don't worry about it. That's not going to fly. But if somebody shows up that night and says, look, you know, we're, we're fine with them, we have a good relationship, we're confident, you know, we're, either we're okay with this plan, or to the extent that, you know, we have any concerns, we're confident we can work it out with them. Your second point is a little bit trickier. What happens when things aren't hunky dory? And things are not often hunky dory, you know, it's part of what I do, is, let me tell you, the sheds, the fences and the decks, well, decks not so much, but sheds and fences.
Yeah.
They, they have made neighborly relations in New Jersey.
I see.
Tough. Everybody knows, everybody knows somebody, or they themselves have been impacted either by a shed that is too close to the line, it's the wrong color, it's too tall, you know, somebody, you know, put up like, you know, like a warehouse shed or something like that. Or fences, they're, they're not where they're supposed to be. New Jersey, we, you know, you're supposed to have the finished side of the fence facing away from you. A lot of folks just say, bah, I don't like the way that looks, I want to have my side look nice. It's, we, we've dealt with a few of those, and it's, it's tough, and those things can drag on. But you know, what happens when, depend, you know, it's, it's a case-by-case basis, whether or not you approach that guy first, or if the first inkling he gets is, you know, a letter in the mail saying, hey, there's a, there's a meeting tonight about, you know, something that could impact you. And if it's already a sore subject, you know, for example, you've got water running off your property on his or something like that, you should expect him to show up, because that's an opportunity for him to get in front of a board that's going to have a power to make recommendations or say, look, we'll approve you if you do X, Y, or Z. You know, that neighbor, he or she's going to have leverage to try and get what they want out of you, if you want. And it doesn't really have to be related to what you're doing. You know, you wanted to put in a pool, you have a longer driveway than normal, so you have an impervious coverage variance. Even though that, that impervious coverage really wasn't triggered by your pool, it really has to do with how far your, your home was set back from the lot line, they can start, you know, opening up a can of worms, as long as there's some sort of link between what you're doing and what they're asking for. But water, you know, water runoff is something you see all the time.
Yeah.
But sometimes neighbors, they like their view. You know, we don't all live on a cul-de-sac, or, you know, just like a quiet suburban streets. Some people paid a lot of money to live on a very tall hill or something like that. You know, Johnson Drive in Scotch Plains? You know, it's got those beautiful, like scenic views, everything like that. Nobody wants to, you know, spend $2 million on a house, and then all of a sudden, somebody puts up like a four-story house, and that, that's your property back there. That's why you spend. So, you know, if you put something up, and somebody, you know, has an issue with, or something like that, it, it depends. If things are just like totally sour, and like you aren't talking, and, you know, like you've gotten into it with them, don't knock on the door. You're just going to have a problem. But you should anticipate them showing up, and you should anticipate what they're going to ask for and what they want. And the truth is, and this is always relatively easy to say, you know, if, if you're putting up, you know, let's, let's just take, for example, the panoramic view, you're putting up a home that someone obstructs their view. If you don't need a variance, and you're just putting up a home that by virtue of where it is on, on, on a hill, or on, you know, your house is further up the street and it blocks their view, and they don't require a variance, tough luck.
Yeah.
You know, and that, that goes both ways. I mean, it's great if you're the guy putting up the. You know, and, and that goes both ways. I mean, it's great if you're the guy putting up the house. If you're not the guy putting up the house and you don't like your view obstructed and they don't need a variance for that height, there's not a whole lot you can do about it.
Sure.
But, you know, if, if it has to do with, uh, you know, a, a side yard setback by virtue of your lot that you had nothing to do with creating, it's, it's a little narrower and you're now a little closer to the line than that, what's permitted. Yeah, they might show up and they might say, look, this is, you know, this is inappropriate. It's too close. It's already negatively impacting me. If, if they continue with this development, it's going to further negatively impact me. You need to anticipate those sort of questions and, and you need to have reasonable responses. Okay? It can't just be, no, the guys that say, the, the applicants that say, no, just anything that the board asks for, would you consider coming down in height a little bit? You know, we, you've got your roof pitched like a, a hard V. I mean, could, could you come down a little bit, uh, uh, on that? See if we can sort of offset, you know, this guy's concern. If all you ever say is, no, 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 you're gonna have a long, you're gonna be a bad night.
Before we get into the negotiation part of the meeting itself. I'm wondering, so when I went through the process with you, um, it was still the height of COVID or coming through COVID. So there's a lot of weekend downtime that I, I had and I did a fair amount of my own due diligence, just out of curiosity about, all right, what do I see on the town website? Because they post, you know, every month they post the minutes, they post everything, everything's very public. So you can see what they granted, what they didn't grant. What do you recommend, or even this is my own recommendation through, I went through it. That there is a certain amount of homeowner due diligence before we even engage in the process at all. If you're thinking, all right, my impervious coverage in my town is 20%, 25%. And I'm seeing already that when someone asks for from 25 to 30, they're getting shot down left and right. Maybe that's a full stop. We're not even going to go through all this process. Or, uh, on the flip side is where for me, I kind of got a sense for like, oh, it seems like this is what they needed to concede. All right, if 25 is the number, it looks like they're, I saw them going up to 30 or 32. I don't know if these are the actual numbers. But how much due diligence, and this is also the responsibility of your attorney as well, I think. But, you know, do you recommend that the homeowners, you know, go down the road a little on their own? Just get a sense of what the town is comfortable with.
So that's actually, it's a good question. There's two good points, uh, uh, about that. Yes, you know, like pre-application or even pre-design, uh, homework that you should be doing. But also what do you need to show in order to get a variance? So yes, you should have an idea of what they're saying yes to. If you're 1% over or something like that, and you're already over because, you know, you bought a house that's already got these existing non-conformities and you didn't aggravate it yourself and you're coming in, you're trying to clean something up. You know, it, there's often, you know, horse trading, you know, things like, but yes, you should take a look at what's been approved. But also if you're, if, if your town, their max impervious coverage limit is like 15% and you're coming in, you're like, nah, I got this 20, I got this 30% plan, like rethink it, rethink it. Like that's, that's super high. There's aggressive and then there's like unrealistic. And, um, making these changes, uh, costs you money, right? I mean, uh, you, you, you have to have your engineer, your architect redraw these plans. Some towns are still hard paper. Some towns are moving away. They want everything electronically submitted. These plans are not cheap to print and they don't ask for like five sets. Like you gotta like send in like, the application I have, uh, in a couple of weeks, we had to submit 26 cents. So every time you gotta change something, you know, you don't want to be the guy that's just like printing dead paper, right? Cause it's very expensive on, on some of these projects. But yes, you should have an idea of, of the flavor of the board, what they're willing to say yes to, what they want in exchange for granting these variances. For example, the perimeter drain and the drywall in the backyard. But in order to get the variance, you also need to show, um, we'll keep it informal. It's, it's two things, you know, you need to satisfy both the positive and the negative criteria. You basically need to show that you're not doing something that's like totally out of character with your neighborhood and totally like flagrantly at odds with the, um, the zoning regulations. So often that looks like, hey, you got, you know, the board gave, uh, this homeowner this variance, you gave him this variance. What I'm doing isn't radically different from what is already existing in my neighborhood. If you've got, if you live on a block where everybody's got a pool, now each property is a little bit different, right? But i- if, if everybody's got a little bit over, but they're all satisfying it with, you know, drains and drywells and, and regrading where appropriate. Or, you know, for example, I need the patio, that's, that's really what's, you know, bumping up my impervious coverage. In exchange for that patio around the pool, I'll go ahead and get rid of, wait, you know, this, this paver patio that's overgrown with weeds that, you know, was built in 1920. I hate it. That'll get rid, you know, that'll whack it down. Or if, um, you know, for example, you have an old fence that's over the property line or, you know, not installed correctly. You know, you come in, you say, look, you give me that variance, I'll, I'll redo the fence. I'll make it correct. I'll put it in the correct. They love seeing people coming in that have done their homework, that they know, you know, are aware of certain non-conformities that they have the power to fix, that they don't really care about, that they'll take care of to bring the property up to, you know, compliance in certain regards while, you know, getting a variance that they're offsetting with, you know, certain improvements, you know, like stormwater drainage or something like that. So yes, do some homework, but part of that homework's, you're gonna need to do it anyway, because you need to show them that what you're doing is consistent with, you know, what's been going on in the neighborhood.
So be prepared to have concessions in hand. Know that, all right, this is what I want, but this is what I'm willing to do. It's true, it's a true negotiation, really, right?
And sometimes don't even go in with negotiation. Like if, if you've got that old fence that's installed backwards, that's over the property line, it's coming up.
Yeah.
It's absolutely coming up. And if you need a variance, they're gonna say, hey, what's that fence like?
Yeah.
If you come in and you show them that like, look, I, I'll, I'll take care of this old ugly fence. We, we're aware of it. We're on top of it. We bought it. We're not the ones that put it in. We're trying to be good neighbors. We want to be good applicants. It's gonna be a lot, you know, that, that comes across a lot better than having to tease it out of them. And, and, you know, and it also burns up time, you know, you don't want to be there all night arguing over fence. It also puts it, you in the driver's seat a little bit, right? Cause when they ask for the fence, it might not be the fence that you want to put in, right? You know, uh, well, you know, we'll go to Home Depot, we'll get the, you know, the, the vinyl fence on sale. You know, they, when they've got the power of the pen, it's, it's also the power of your wallet, right?
Yeah, right.
You know, um, to, take the raids, right? Sometimes you want to leave. If however, it gets dicey when it's something you don't necessarily want to give up, but that what you want is more important than what you have. So listen, they might want you to, to reduce the size of the patio that you have or convert it to something, you know? Sometimes you, you'll get credit, uh, for brick pavers, right? They're, they're treated as impervious, but they're treated as like 80% of, of, so you get like a 20% credit or something like that. That's when you, you know, you go in and, and see what they say, or, or, or if you could, you want to put up a, a project to this size. Like, ah, you know, I want my addition to be X amount of square feet. I could live with, with X amount less, but I really want this. That's when you go in and see if they, you know, give you pushback or something like that. But if you've got like a sore thumb sticking out, take care of it.
Sure. And what is the, um, if I recall, there is this, the hardship component of like, boy, we really, like what are there, there, there should be other options available. I didn't know that when we put in the pool, they mentioned the town pool. And our answer was it's COVID, people are very, you know, uncomfortable being in public settings like that. That was kind of a response to this hardship. What other sort of hardship types of questions that can be?
There's two kinds of, when you say hardship, there's two kinds of variances, uh, generally with, with respect to dimensions. C, c variances, you're too, something's too big, something's too close to something. You have what's called like the flexible variance. What I want to do, what I'm proposing is better than, you know, it's, it's the, the, the benefits outweigh the detriments. Having it there is, is better than, um, you know, a, a, any deviation from the zoning regulations. The benefit of having is not as harmful as, um, you know, just the detriment to the, to the zoning regulations generally. There's also what's called a hardship variance, like, hey, my lot is shaped like a pizza slice. It's super narrow at one end. That's like throwing everything off. There's nothing, like I can't go out and get more land, right? I can't like reorder, you know, rearrange my property lines. Based on what I'm doing, you know, I'm sort of, I need this variance because of, you know, the, the peculiar shape of my parcel. Or, you know, I, I live on a hill, I've got super steep slopes. I can't build on those slopes, right? You know, I need to be certain amount away from those slopes. Yes, that puts me a little bit closer or constrains my building envelope, which, you know, instead of having a, a large square, I've got a smaller square. And that gives me, you know, a, a, a certain disadvantage on, you know, the coverage or, or something like that. That's the hardship variance. What you're talking about is anticipating questions, as I, you know.
Yeah.
You wanted the pool, they've got a town pool. Hey, why not use the town pool?
Well, I guess.
Why do we go, why, why are we gonna give you these variants?
So I guess that maybe clarifies what I'm, what I'm really thinking. How much is it the homeowner needs to be prepared? Cause I remember we were responding to with questions that you would have no real answer for as the attorney walking us through the process. They were asking very specific questions about the town and, you know, why our family and why this and why that. What, what, at what point is it homeowners taking the responsibility of, of responding and, and lawyers? And how do you work together through the whole process?
So we'll use your, your application, because there's two really good examples, right? I think, I don't know if we anticipated this at the get-go or if we heard the question from them, because the people in front of us had, had a pool variant.
Yeah.
And, uh, the first question was like, why not just, why don't you just use the town pool?
Sure.
And, uh, I think they, they struggled with it and it's, it's not their fault. They probably didn't anticipate it. You know, obviously when you, when you mar, you're allowed to, you know, let it marinate a little bit, you, you come up with a reasonable answer. I think we said, you know, we, A, we're, we're not that close. B, it's COVID, you know, obviously the COVID excuse isn't gonna fly anymore. But, you know, we, we want to entertain. Um, we want to entertain at hours that, you know, don't necessarily coincide with what pool's doing, uh, with town pool. And, um, you know, it's, it's, we have the room for it, what we're proposing, you know, we'd like to be heard at. But you, you need to have some reasonable answer as to like why the town pool alone isn't sufficient. That's sort of, I mean, look, my town is, well, we belong to our town pool. I don't really have room for a pool in my backyard. But, uh, it, it's, it's not the same thing as, as having like, you know, the, the intimate family cookout or something like that with friends, family and friends. And they get that, they get that. Listen, it's, it's also a night out for the board members. Sometimes they just ask questions because they like, they like, they like to see the African sizzle, right? I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's sport, but, um, but yeah, I mean, listen, to be fair, those board members are there, right? They are there to make sure that like, A, people aren't like burdening the town sewer or something, you know, it's, it's raining. We, we get more rain than we used to. I mean, that water's gotta go somewhere. We are way over capacity in a lot of towns. They are there to make sure that like development is being done properly and like you, the neighbor and the town in general are like protected against, you know, overbuilding and, and just making sure that any of these deviations are offset by, you know, the certain things. But, you know, the, the second question, I, I think we anticipated before, I, I, I think you had, we had to figure out, we knew that they were going to ask how close you were to, I think there's like a walking path.
It's a walking path, right?
And Claire went out. She measured it. They asked the question.
Let's, let's, let's call a spade a spade. It was me. She was just, you know, she was, she was our spokesperson because she's very, much more eloquent.
I, I see. So Claire went out and measured it. And then they asked the question, they probably thought that you two were going to be totally tripped up. She's like, it has 201 feet. Exactly. And they were like, oh, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
We had that, the other, we had equipment that was near the walking path.
That's what it was.
But it was about 50 feet. And it could, you know, it has a little bit of noise. Now, on the other side of the walking pass is a county road where cars are routinely going 50 miles an hour.
So there's that too.
Yeah.
Right? So it's, it's knowing that question, knowing the answer to it, but also being able to say like, hey, you know, it's a lot louder than, you know, my pump.
Yeah.
You know.
The motorcycle's pulling through the reservation. Sure.
Right. But no, that's, that's the, uh, you know, the experience of knowing what they're gonna ask, knowing the sort of sensitive areas about your application that are gonna come up. And, you know, just having been in front of that board, just by virtue of sitting in the pews, you know, i- i- in the back, hearing what they're gonna ask.
And would you recommend even then, if you know, all right, next month in August, I have, I have a meeting. It's worth sitting in on the, on the.
Maybe. So, so if they're, if they're virtual, you can always, you know, cook your pasta dinner while you've got Zoom on in the background. You're muted. Nobody's even gonna know you're there.
Yeah.
Or, uh, most town, most towns are pretty good about this. Some towns are pretty far behind. They all post meeting minutes. So if you don't, if you don't have the capacity to go down to town hall uh, and, and sit through a bunch of zoning applications from seven to 11 at night, you can always see if the meeting minutes are. So that way you get a flavor of the questions that were asked and everything like that. They're not perfect. They are like stream of consciousness notes.
Sure.
Taken by an often overworked administrative professional that just then posted online, but they're, they're totally pretty accurate.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, look, if, if, if you've got an application and you know somebody's doing something that's really similar to what you got going on. Yeah, check it out.
Yeah.
Check it out.
So let's kind of put a bow on this a little bit. Key takeaways, you're thinking about this, you came across this podcast, you're thinking, maybe I'm gonna, I want to put in a pool, I want to put an addition. I gotta go down this road. What are the things that the homeowner, homeowner should be thinking about first and foremost before anything?
So you, you're gonna need at least an architect. So you need to have some sort of professional that's gonna show up, not only draw the plans, but show up and like provide testimony and answer questions. Do you have an attorney? You also need to think about timing.
And that's just an attorney, a land use attorney.
Yeah.
Cause if you've got a buddy of yours who's, you know, is a, just closes real estate transactions, it's a whole other ballgame.
Yeah. You, you can't have, um, a potted plant, which put out, I mean, they, they need to speak the lingo. They need to know what boards care about. They need to know, questions are gonna be asked. They need to be able to take a look at your application. Like I said, identify sensitive areas that are gonna come up and have reasonable responses and work with you to know. You know, when the board says, look, you know, we're a little concerned about this. Would you be willing to shrink it by X, Y, and Z? Work with you and know where your boundaries are at, because sometimes the answer is no. Now, I said before, you can't say no to everything, but sometimes you need to say no. And it's, that's an art and not exactly a science, right? You need to, there's a way to get that across that isn't like, I'm entitled to put my stuff up. You're not allowed to tell me no, like you're gonna have a bad night, if, if, if that's the way you're gonna approach it. There is a soft way, uh, I think it's Harry Truman. It's, you need to be able to step on someone's shoes without leaving scuff marks, right? That's, that's, that's sort of the art and, and why you need like a, a land use attorney who, who knows, um, these things get heated sometimes, like they really do. Who knows how to like deescalate, knows how to work a board member, knows how to like, you know, soft pedal a no. In a way that comes across as like, you know what, that's fine. It's reasonable. They gave me X, Y, and Z on this. They're pushing back on this, but they have like a reasonable, they have a rational reason as to why they're saying no with like an offset as to why like my concern, even if I disagree with it. Even if I'm still gonna vote no, it just, y- you might be the only person that's voting no. You might win over some people. There, there's a way to get it across rather than like a very aggressive, not happening. But you need to also talk about timing, like with you, right? You're putting in a pool, you really want that pool by summer, you know? This is not a fast moving process. It is not a fast moving process, right? Just, just the outside dates and some of these things. You submit, you submit as fast as you can. You get it done in 48 hours. They have up to 45 days by law to determine whether it's complete or not. Not, most towns are quicker than that, but that's your outside date. It could be a month and a half before you even hear back from them. And that's not, you know, you could hear, well, you owe me a lot more. You go to your meeting, you're gonna get a, uh, everything goes well, you're gonna get a, a vote that night. But you're not, you're not gonna be ready for, for big time that night.
Yeah.
Resolution needs to be written and adopted. That's probably another 30 days. It could be longer. If you have conditions in that, um, uh, you know, I think we, we had a mutual friend that needed to, uh, like take down a fence or something like that. Those conditions need to be satisfied before they're gonna sign off on the plans. So, uh, and, and get your permits, right? That's what you need. You need to do this whole thing before you're allowed to just hold those permits and say you're allowed to construct. So soup to nuts, like, you know, fastest you can really get it done is, is, is three months. It often takes much longer than that. So maybe you need to think about, you know, if you want something ready by summer, you know, you really need to be designing that thing way in advance.
Yeah, in the fall.
Because it also takes time to pull your permits. You've gotta get your construction schedule all set up, you know, you've gotta get financing in place. If, if, if you're gonna be financing, you know, like an addition or something like that. It's, it's not a fast moving process. And that's oftentimes the number one sort of struggle I see with applicants is how do we speed this thing up? And that's also an art and it's, you know, o- often there's nothing that you can do, just by virtue of a calendar. You know, you didn't go the night you want to go. So now you're going next month, right? That, that stinks. But with a coordinated attorney and a, you know, team of professionals, they know where they can, you submit a very good application from the get-go, it's gonna cut down on time, because you don't want to hear back a month later that you didn't submit X, Y, and Z. Once they give you that letter, there's no time anymore. You know, they've got an outside date and whether they, they need to render a decision on like a complete application. But if you send them a, a half hazard application that's missing a bunch of things, it, you know, you might not. But if you send them a, a half hazard application that's missing a bunch of things, it, you know, you might not get your calendar date for months.
Sure.
And that's, you know, that, that's not good, but that's avoidable, that's an avoidable delay. And, um, you know, having somebody that knows how to do this. If I could chew my own horn, um, I submitted in May for this application I've got in, in two weeks. This is the fastest counter date I've ever gotten, right? I mean, it was within a month. I think the town really wants this, um, but, uh, you know, with, with, with knowing what needs to be in, knowing what you can get away with, you know, what you can push and ask for as later as a condition of approval or something like that, goes a long way, goes a long way. But some delays are unavoidable. The right, right person, uh, representing you, uh, you can really, you can cut down on the delay.
Great. All right, well, thank you very much, Justin.
Thank you, Tim.
If you have any questions for Justin, if you'd like to talk to him about, uh, getting a variance yourself, you can reach him at 973-232-0618 or J-C-A-L-T-A-S-B-R dot com. Thank you to all those who are listening and watching. Make sure to subscribe to our YouTube, YouTube and podcast channel and we'll talk to you next time.